Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
As six o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District to order. Are there any changes to the agenda, assuming everybody has memorized the agenda? Not hearing any. Um, yeah, I think the first item, and I'll actually get a quick check is to, is to, are there any communications or public comments? We don't have anybody outside of ourselves here. Anybody get an email or anything?
No.
Okay. Do you have anything, Chris, that anybody sent you?
No, I don't have anything.
And neither do I. I had some comment from a constituent about high school, but that's not relevant here. All right. Moving on, since we have no adjustments and no communication, review and approve board minutes. And I'm going to confess to my embarrassment, I have not looked at the, at the board, the minutes of the last meeting. As I said, I've been a little under the weather. Anybody actually read them? Yeah, Lynn.
I read them. I saw two mistakes. One was Melissa was not listed in the attendance level, but later on she was recorded as having asked questions. So obviously she was there. And then there was on number seven, line four, it says T I N E, Melissa, that's reference to fourth grade. Should that be a Tina? Or is it a Tyne?
I only, I, I'd be going to bed at Tina.
Chris, do you recognize the name?
It's Tyne, Christine, but she goes by Tyne.
Tyne, okay.
Well. Or teen, teen or Tyne, yeah.
Okay. So it's, it's not, it's not a mistake then?
No. But I'll correct the other one that you just shared with us and make sure Melissa's there.
All right. Thanks, Nicole.
You're welcome.
All right.
I've got one additional. I think we can move to approve the minutes with corrections. And one additional one is at the very end, there's some other minor ones, Nicole, but I think the final one for me would be to correct Lynn Morgan's name, the very last toward the end paragraph. I think it says Lynn Mourning, which is a lovely name, but it's not our Lynn.
I will correct it.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unless Lynn wants to go and, you know, Secretary of State's office, is it? Mourning's kind of nice. All right. So I have, I have a motion to approve with corrections. Let me take a roll call. Lynn, are you in favor of the corrections?
Good, yes.
All right, Cheryl?
Yes.
And I will be. And, you know, okay, so we're, we're there for that. Moving on, as we shall. Finance report. For you're on, and there is some interest in knowing about where we sit relative to whether we have a working surplus going towards the end of the school year, or whether we are, we are flat on the money or even behind. So with that query from negotiations members, you're on.
So surplus wise, we do have the same amount of carryover. As bottom line, which is the funds that you have available right now, we don't have the final number because we haven't closed the year. And teachers are putting in all their expenses, you know, for activities and trying to organize everything that they need before the year ends. And I wouldn't know anything until maybe the middle of July. Right now I was listening, somebody left me a voicemail, some invoices pending, so going with all that. But I would have a number till maybe mid-July. That is the closest that we could do, you know, giving, taking into consideration the fact that, you know, we had told already principals that they are not supposed to purchase anything that is not in need or emergent, so that way it helps us to close faster. But it will take time. As for revenue, right now, we know already, we don't have any extra revenue. We got all payments from all of the towns. So that was a really good thing. I was really excited. So that has clear and that's been deposited in all the accounts for the schools as well. So I had to say thank you to all of the towns that were really diligent in sending those checks on time as well. They had to, to June 2nd to do it, and we got them by May, mid-May already.
Not to anticipate Cheryl's question, but I'm going to ask you because if she doesn't, and I should, I'm going to ask it now. Here's the thing. We're, as you know, finishing up our, our posentries with the NEA. And we're trying to figure out, we had scheduled, I believe, 1.5% as a contingency on this budget. I think that was the number. And it would be useful for us to know, and it's sounding like I've got a negative answer, whether or not we have a forecastable surplus above and beyond that. With COVID this year, I know it's been a bit of a train wreck, even though we've had some additional grant money. So the question really is, is there anything in the kitty that, beyond that 1.5%?
So at the moment, I can say yes or no, because right now as well, you know, there are expenses that each of the school has that are COVID-related expenses, and those expenses get allocated to grants. So we haven't closed the grants either. We're working on that as well. You know, Dr. Carey has been working, you know, throughout the week to set everything and start submitting everything that she needs to submit to close grants. So until we close grants, we know what is approved and we know what we get, I can assure you that you're going to have over at least a 1.5%. You should have your 1.5% because that's what it was budgeted for, but above that, I can assure until we have every grant's payments. So we closed a portion of grants the last week of May, which was last week, and we did submit for 1.5 million for the grants, but, you know, submitting that doesn't mean that we got it already. So it's just, you know, not only getting the revenue, it's also allocating that and adjusting those expenses.
Right. I, you know.
Those are the S R one grants that we're, we're talking about right now.
Well, I think it's important, you know, even though we, negotiations are semi-secret and all that stuff, the reality is that this is, this is material that I think is reasonable to, to have as part of the public discussion, which is, you know, what's available and what isn't. And it's really sounding like any forecast beyond that, as you had said, Chris, to us would be speculative and, and, you know, would be risky to make an assumption on. And it sounds like that is what Forrester is saying as well. I have to say I'm disappointed because it means that we're a little bit more hogtied than I thought we were going to be, but.
I could give you a contingency amount, that was said.
No, I, we're assuming that the contingency is going to be there, and if it's not there, well, then we're in deficit spending, but if we're, but, but the question has been, we've had some requests for, for generosity above and beyond that, given the state of the year. And the question came, well, is that something that's realistic? Many years we have managed to have in the neighborhood of $100,000-ish in the way of a running surplus, but with COVID this year, that, who knows? And it's sounding like we better not be betting on it because it's probably not there. And that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Well, so we did calculations. So like I try to plan ahead for the year because I want to stay away from the fact that some school had to extra line of credits and all those things. So we did calculations as how much it was going to be an estimate of payroll for the end of the year for each of the districts and how much, you know, balance each of the schools will have, just taking into consideration salaries.
Yep, yep.
So going with that, I have to say that at least for the Union Elementarys, we had at least 3.01 million in their accounts.
Right.
Paying salaries and everything.
Hold on, hold on. I have a two-year-old granddaughter who likes to call me about this point. Sorry. Anyway, she's going to have to be disappointed for half an hour. So, okay, I'm sorry, I caught you, I lost you at about 3.1 million, and you're starting to explain how that all weighs out.
Yeah, so it's just a fact of, you know, that what you have will be the amount taken for contingencies and everything. So going with that right now, I would just stick to at least the fact that, you know, you do have the amount to cover your 1.5% for contingency and 2.5 for the previous year. You know, that I do know that you guys do have it.
Yeah.
But final numbers, like I said, until we do payouts and close all expenses, I would have a bottom line.
You're going to have to explain to Cheryl what you meant by the 2.5. That's the rollover that we're counting on for next year. Yeah. And then that, we're using that as part of the contingency, I believe, for this coming year. Cheryl, ask your question rather than having me ask it for you.
You actually, you just asked my question because it was, I'm kind of, what was the 2.5? If you could speak to that, please.
2.5 is what we had anticipated as a contingency for the negotiations for next year. And 1.5 is what we had, Edie had set aside for this past year. So that's what we mean between 1.5. 1.5 is for this year, 2.5 is for moving forward for next year.
Right. And that, and that, the origin of that is, is a rollover, basically. So, and that's how we get it because there was concern about that. And as everybody here knows, but maybe anyone that watches later doesn't know, is that the mechanism for budgets are you spend your money and any, any, any surplus you may generate is essentially held pending, held with state really, pending the audit of the books and isn't available for the year immediately following, but the year after that. So you're, so this 2.5% surplus from what will be, it's two years ago now, but it'll be, will be, will be available for a year ago now, will be available this coming year. And it's the money as the source we are using for building contingency, is my understanding.
Yeah, it's not so much a surplus, it's something that we had budgeted for.
Right.
And so it's not like.
Right.
We expected that. That's, that's one of the things that, you know, each, you know, we, we speak to the boards and say, for instance, if, you know, if we're going to, you know, when we start working on the budget for next year, we'll have the conversation with the board, how much, you know, do we want to budget as a contingency and we work it into the budget. So because in the past year, going on two years, we haven't negotiated, hasn't worked out, so that money is still there. So it rolls over and it's, even though it's labeled a surplus, it's still something that, you know, we had budgeted for.
Right. And, and the, and I will tell all you guys and, you know, America, if they're curious, that we do have a, a 630 fiscal year ending, and you can't, you can't create a debt in '07 and be able to pull out a 630 money. And that's the reason why we, you know, very, you know, urged upon our, our union folks to, to let's cut this for this year so that we don't lose the money to pay them. We want to pay it, many wasn't able to return. All right. For, anything else we got beyond that?
Yeah, so contract wise for teachers, we sent out 36 and we got the 36 back. And I, we have, for Westminster, we have five resignations, one retiring, and then for Grafton, it was three resignations.
Three resignations. Oh, is this one that we already knew about, you know?
Yeah, it's nothing new. This is just informing that we're done with the contracts for the teachers. We sent out 36 and we got back.
Right.
We didn't have any extensions pending or anything.
Right. It's the first kindergarten first grade teacher who's moving to Westminster. Is that, is that considered resignation or a transfer, by the way?
No, those will be transferred. We wouldn't consider that a resignation because they will still be part of us.
Apart from that, I don't remember who, who that was. Do we, is that something we are supposed to know or?
No, we usually just give the overall numbers for everyone. And right now they're in, everyone's, like Floris said, all contracts that were, we needed signed, we have them back.
All right. All right. Anybody? Lynn or Cheryl, do you have any questions? I don't want to ask you all the questions.
Jack?
Nothing additional right now. Lynn, go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
You had mentioned in the negotiation piece of 336. What does that mean?
Did I mention that?
Maybe I didn't hear it right.
I think, I think For was talking about the overall budget, but I don't think she was talking about, I don't, I think, was that, was it a 3.36 figure or a 3. something? I don't know.
No mistake.
No issues, no issues. So For, is that it? The grand sum total? All right. Thank you for.
Thank you.
For all of that. Then we're on to item six, which is old and unfinished business for discussion and action. We have, Cheryl, do you want to, do you want to take the lead on this? To the extent that there is, so we had here?
I can report quickly that with the first item of the State Board of Education and Westminster's withdrawal, the update, we have the, the Secretary of State has officially warned an election in Westminster for three school board members to be held on June 30th. So that's been officially warned, it will happen, absentee ballots will be available to people. There's a small amount of information in the form of the warning on the supervisory union website, under the Union Elementary School District area of the website. So if the public wants to go and see that announcement, and there will certainly be additional information about that special election that will be held on June 30th. Following that election, those three school board members, and may I say for the public again, that the reason three school board members for Westminster's School District are being elected is that's what the State Board of Education told us or asked us to do, to form a board of three persons. Westminster would like to return to a five-person board. So immediately after the election of these three persons, then that new board will work with the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School Board, that is this board, on the terms of the financial aspects of Westminster's withdrawal from the district, which really, you know, more than anything involves the debt having to do with the building of the gymnasium in Westminster, which remains with Westminster, but we'd be clear about that. So that those terms would be worked out. And then another election will be held, and that date has been set for August 31st, August 31. At that election, then the voters in the three towns, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster, would be asked to vote to approve whatever terms of agreement about the finances have been worked out to propose to the public. And Westminster will also be asking, and it will be warned that Westminster is wanting to expand its board to five persons, so to elect two more. And I believe on the ballot, there will be candidates for those two additional persons. And again, that election would take place August 31. And then one, at least, one of the persons who will be elected coming up June 30, those terms are not a full year. They're running from the election in June until town meeting in 2022, 2023, 2024. So we'll have one board person who will be elected June 30, whose term will expire in March of 2022. And so I'm sure at that point, there will be an election for that, for that seat. I'm not sure how all the others will play out. And I think the point of all of this is that the town of Westminster and this Union Elementary Board and the Supervisory Union are all following the instructions from the State Board of Education about how to properly create this town school board again, which would be a part of the Supervisory Union. The State Board of Education has taken no action, and I believe anticipates no action to, to have Westminster's status change, that Westminster would continue to be part of the Supervisory Union. And Jack, you'll want to pick up then on the part about Athens and Grafton and this Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. That's the part you can help everybody understand even better.
Maybe. Couple things. Just to pick up on your point, I didn't know, or maybe I did and forgotten about the August 31st vote. We, this board will have to be co-warn that meeting. So we will need to have a warning done and, you know, wrapped up on July, on or before July 21st, which may mean that we will, so a normal meeting on, in July is, I think, after that, we may have to have a brief meeting, that so-called first meeting of the month. We may have to use that and dedicate it to that, to that proposition. At that point, we will need to have had the, we need to have gotten all of our ducks in a row in terms of, of negotiating out the money. We all think we know what it is, making sure that we have something in there about transferring the deed. We, I, we're going to need to work out if there are any issues on this, on this meeting about, if the meeting that's happening on 630 includes any of our incumbent members. Looking at you, Cheryl, are you, if you are on, we will need to figure out how that works because I, John Carroll sent me a note that he hoped that we weren't going to have members on both boards simultaneously, and I haven't answered that because I didn't know if I wanted to. And, but we'll have to look at how that gets dealt with, or if it needs to get dealt with. I will suggest to our, to Lynn and Ginger, when she's available and, and Jess, when she's available, that we may want to consider whether we're going to include changing the number of persons on the board prior to March town meeting, or if we want to not do that. We are going to have to have something that allows for a four-person board when the withdrawal is effective. We will be a six-person board with Westminster members until March of this, of next year. So people need to know that that's how we're going to operate. We're, we, we still have legal authority for the district as it's constituted until March town meeting, I think. I don't, I don't.
I think it's July, Jack. I think, I think it would be.
Well, I know that they don't have, that there's some legal authority they don't have because the, because the, the turnover is effective in March, I believe. You and I will check on that. My, my preference is to finesse the issue and do what we did back when we were still fighting the consolidation, which is have everybody meet jointly and hopefully operate by consensus and deal with it that way. But I, I, when I talked to, when I talked to Donna Russo Savage, she suggested that there was some ambiguity there, and whatever ambiguity is there, we want to respond with our own ambiguity and, and make sure that we, you know, cover the issue so that everybody's comfortable.
Jack, I can add, you just asked the question, there are, there are candidates for each of the three terms, the, the three board members to be elected. I'm on the ballot to run for the three-year term, or the, the one until March of 2024. Charlie Hutchison, who has been an advisor appointed by, actually voted by the townspeople of Westminster to be a member of the Town Advisory Committee, is running for the, the two-year position. And David Major is running for the one-year position to take us up until March of 2022. On advice of council, I would be the only one currently serving on this board now elected, if I am elected to the Westminster Town School Board. If I'm elected, I would resign from this board. And I believe, and Chris can help with this as always, but I believe it would be this board then, on behalf of all three towns, because we all represent the children in all three towns. We don't represent our towns on this union school board. But there would need to be an appointment, a replacement for me to, to this board. Melissa would fill out her terms.
Oh, I will say that replacing you is not possible, but that's a personal view as opposed to a, you know, a legal statement. All right. When we get to that point, I will be looking for somebody quite candidly, even though, again, you said that, you know, we could, we do as we like with that because it is a representative of the district. I would strongly prefer to have somebody who's interested in school board governance from, from Westminster would be strongly encouraged to apply. And I'm going to, you know, if need be, we're going to put out handbills on the town square for that. So there you go. All right. Thank you, Cheryl. This was, you know, disappointing news at one level, but understandable otherwise. So there you go. Any questions from Lynn or actually from Chris for that matter, because this is maybe some news to them? Well, with that, let's see, negotiations. We will talk about this briefly in executive session. On X, 6D Policy Committee, I had originally anticipated that the SU was going to take a first vote on one new policy and an amendment, but they were not able to do that the last time. So I'm going to advise we pass over that item and, and go on to negotiations and, and ask Chris if he would put us into executive session. We are now out of executive session at 6:43 this evening. And I'm going to make a motion. And that is, the motion is that the Board of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District approves in principle that a side agreement to provide additional compensation to teachers and paraprofessionals working in the 2021 school year and who are continuing their service in the coming year, providing that an agreement on this point can take place on or before June 30th of this year. Is there any additional clarification? Cheryl, yes?
No, just going to second the motion, not that you need it, but.
And Chris, you had made a point in, in our session that we need to make in public on this.
Yeah, it's just so. Yeah, it's just so the public's aware is that if and when the two sides agree on a monetary amount for the side agreement, that it will be coming back to the board, this board for approval of that monetary amount if a side agreement is made. This is just a motion to give, um, members of this board who are in negotiation committee, uh, the opportunity to continue to move forward with trying to come up with an amount for, for a side agreement, um, for all the hard work that teachers and parents have, have put forth this school year of 2021.
And, and you, and it should be noted that we have not, uh, noted in this, um, this resolution, a, a dollar figure or any of that, uh, at this point. Uh, that would be subject to, um, approval of this board when it comes back to us, assuming that we get it back to us. All right. Um, any further discussion? And I'll do a quick roll call. Lynn, what say ye?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
All right. Then we have unanimity on this and I will, uh, give this to, um, Nicole here momentarily. And, uh, with that, do we have any other bu- business before this August body? Uh, no new business. Uh, we don't have policies. Uh, director's comments would be this for the time for this. Uh, Cheryl?
Nothing more from me tonight. Thank you very much.
When?
Nothing more from me. Thank you very much.
All right. And I'm going to hold my peace for once. Uh, see you all in graduation. Uh, so, um, look forward to that. Talk to you soon. Bye all.